Good evening. Let's begin tonight's meeting. I'd like to welcome you, commissioners. Welcome to our city manager, department heads and staff, everyone that's joined the meeting. This evening's meeting is limited to the public as far as in-person attendance, but we are viewable online at the city's Facebook page as well as website and also on Southern Lake Channel 10. And we encourage... I think we need someone to mute. Okay. As I was saying, we do encourage the public's participation by way of public comment during our receipts of petitions and communications. So I'd welcome anyone from the public to call in now, and we will have you unmute and join the meeting when it's time. And you're welcome to bring anything that you like before the commission this evening. You can do that by calling 575-763-9200. We'll begin this evening with a word of prayer, and then we will go into honoring our flags. If you would, pray with me, please. Our Heavenly Father, we praise you for the many blessings that you give us each day. God, we ask your blessings over our meeting this evening, that you would guide us to be good stewards of the city's resources. And God, we thank you for our city and our community and the wonderful people of Clovis. And Lord, we just pray for our community and our state and just ask for your blessings and for prosperity for our people and good health. We ask these things in the name of Jesus. Amen. Join me in honoring our flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Our meeting is called to order. Ms. Reyes, are you going to call roll for us?
I am.
All right. Could we have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Levitt?
Here.
Commissioner Madrid?
Here.
Commissioner Casaus?
Here.
Commissioner Elliott?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Bryant?
Here.
Commissioner Garza?
Here.
Commissioner Rowley?
Here.
Commissioner Paula?
Here.
Mayor Morris?
Here. Thank you, Ms. Reyes. Appreciate that. Next is the approval of the agenda. Commissioners, you've had the opportunity to review the agenda. Are there any suggested changes or rearrangements?
If there's no changes...
Go ahead, Mayor. Sorry. Under New Business, it should be a request for approval of appointment of representatives for District 2 and 3 instead of 1 and 2.
Correct.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. Everyone make note of that. Item 1 under New Business is dealing with Districts 2 and 3, not 1 and 2 as printed.
I move for approval for...
Okay. We have a motion to approve from Commissioner Garza.
Second.
Second from Mayor Pro Tem Bryant. Commissioners, please vote. And the vote is unanimous, and the motion is carried. Next is approval of minutes. One set of minutes there. Commissioners, from the Thursday, March 4, 2021 meeting, those meetings are in your packet. Do you recommend any changes or corrections to those minutes? Or do I hear a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve from Commissioner Casaus, second from Commissioner Garza. Commissioners, please vote. And the vote is unanimous. The motion is carried. Next is recognition of visitors. And I would like to recognize and welcome everyone who has joined the meeting virtually this evening. I know we have some applicants for the committee openings and others that have joined the meeting, and we look forward to hearing from each of you when we reach the point in the agenda that you're here for. Next is proclamations, awards, and presentations. And we do have a proclamation this evening, and it is a proclamation proclaiming March 18, 2021, as Transit Driver Appreciation Day. Did we have someone that would be sharing with us on that this evening?
Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, and Commissioners, we have our Director of our CATS Department, Mary Lou Kemp.
Director of CATS, Mary Lou Kemp. We're so glad that you've joined us this evening, and we're happy to make this proclamation this evening. I'd like to give you the floor to share with us about this if you like.
Thank you, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, and Commissioners. It's an honor to recognize our drivers this way. Transit Driver Appreciation Day has not been happening for too long. It started in Seattle, and we've been doing it since 2015. And we do this in various ways. We provide thank you items to our drivers, snacks and such. We did provide a luncheon for them today. It was a grab and go lunch for them, and they were able to come in as they could and receive those items. And I want to thank each of you and administration for recognizing our transit drivers in this special way. And I also want to thank Kelsey for how she worked to develop items for Facebook and also radio spots on our local radio stations. I also... This past year has been really rough on our community, our nation, and the world. And it's been really tough trying to work on ways to be able to continue to serve the public and at the same time keep our staff safe and our customers safe. Even though we've seen, even though through the bad, we've seen a lot of acts of kindness and heroism, and I really think it's important that we take the time to provide recognition for the good that's being done in our community. And I want to say thank you for doing this, and I want to accept this proclamation for the many hours and many miles that our transit drivers have given to the citizens of this community. And this doing so lets our citizens continue to get to work, continue to get to dialysis, continue to get to the medical appointments, and shopping for essential items during this time. Thank you.
Well, thank you, Ms. Kemp. We appreciate you joining the meeting, and thank you so much for sharing with us about your department and about the wonderful work that you do. And we sure appreciate that. And I want to read the proclamation, but I will pause for just a moment for any comments from the commission.
Mayor?
Yes, Commissioner.
I'll just say, Ms. Kemp, thank you so much for the work that you do. It's important. All of our different departments in the city are important, and what you said was well done and well said, and I couldn't have said it any better. I just agree with your comments about your team. So, thank you.
Thank you for that, Commissioner. Anyone else? Yes?
Yes, I just want to recognize the drivers. I mean, they're all there for our citizens, and they always taking care of our people. So, very thankful for that. I appreciate all of you. Thank you.
Great. Yes, Commissioner Madrid?
I just want to thank Mary, I mean, Mrs. Kemp, and all the drivers from the CATS. Thank you for all you do.
Outstanding. Commissioners and Ms. Kemp, I'll share the proclamation now. Whereas, transit drivers are committed to providing safe, reliable, and sustainable transportation to residents in the city of Clovis who depend on transit to go to work, school, and other destinations safely and on time. And whereas, transit drivers perform admirably under difficult weather and traffic conditions, maintaining schedules, offering directions, announcing stops, and providing many other forms of customer service while maintaining their focus on safe driving. And whereas, transit drivers exercise patience, empathy, humor, and understanding while acting as leaders and role models for each other, their communities, and the residents they serve. And whereas, transit drivers support Clovis's current and future growth and prosperity, allowing commerce to move freely on roads, expanding access to education and work opportunities, and providing transportation to visitors from around the world. And whereas, transit drivers across Clovis merit appreciation, gratitude, and respect for their public service on Transit Driver Appreciation Day and throughout the year. Now therefore, I, Mike Morris, Mayor of the City of Clovis, and on behalf of the City Commission, do hereby proclaim March 18, 2021, as Transit Driver Appreciation Day in the City of Clovis, and urge citizens of Clovis to show their appreciation and gratitude to all transit drivers.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Kemp, and we will get the proclamation by your office.
Okay.
Thank you. Commissioners, next in the agenda this evening, we have receipts of petitions and communications. I will pause in the chance that we had someone call in that wishes to share with us this evening. Did we have anyone call in?
No.
Seems that we did not. So, I guess I'll take the opportunity to report on Senate Bill 49. I know there's so much, you know, that we're tracking with the session, but in particular, I'm watching Senate Bill 49 pretty closely and working on that. And I just wanted to share that it is on the floor calendar, having made it through all of the committees and passed the Senate a couple of weeks ago. It is on the floor calendar. However, we are waiting to see that on the floor agenda and dealt with. And of course, time is running out. There's only about 48 hours left in this general session. So, we will keep our fingers crossed and keep working closely with Representative Crowder and others that are pushing that and working on that piece of legislation, and we'll keep you updated. Anything else under receipts of petitions and communications? Yes, Commissioner Madrid?
You know, I noticed that we got from Capital Outlay, which they haven't signed yet. But I know we noticed that 7th Street didn't get funded. The Animal Control Building didn't get funded, 1 and 2. The parking lot got funded, playground got funded, Norris got funded, MLK didn't get funded. And I was kind of disappointed that number 5, all the way down, went up to number 2 or number 1 on that list. But I guess I was pretty disappointed because 7th really needs to be repaired. And MLK, I've had it for 12 years there on that, and I'd never done anything with it. But I guess if my representative owned some land there by Norris or by MLK or 7th, I might get it done. But since my representative doesn't own any land on MLK or any land on 7th, then I guess it's never going to get done. So, I was just kind of disappointed in that, that Norris got up there from 39 all the way to first place. And that's kind of disappointing, that the other people, the other streets didn't get, they were much worse, and they didn't get funded at all. So, that's what I have to say.
Mayor?
Yes, Commissioner Casaus?
That too. I have the same reservation as Commissioner Madrid. On Monday, after I read what was going to be approved, I happened to go by Martin Luther King, and there was a man and a woman in their wheelchair going up towards the hospital. They only have maybe two feet to go in their wheelchair. But I guess it's going to take somebody getting hurt or killed before we get something done with Martin Luther King. So, that is very disappointing, because a lot of people walk, there's no sidewalks, there's nowhere that they can actually walk or travel in their wheelchair safely down that road. So, that's my spiel.
Well, Commissioner Casaus and Commissioner Madrid, I hear you and share your concerns. And we want to continue to work on all of the community's needs. I know that MLK will continue to be a priority. I know that MLK is at various stages of design. Is that right? And Mr. Hawal, could you speak to that? Where are we at in design? Talk to us about maybe the timeline or the expected timeline on design?
Certainly. Thank you, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, and Commissioners. And as you all are aware, we received Capital Outlay funding about two years ago to go through the design process. We are nearing the end. I had received 60% design plans a couple of months ago. We're close to about 90% now. We're tying up some of the details that we needed at the intersections with 7th Street as well as with 21st Street, as well as the street lighting design for the plans itself. But we're nearing the process to work complete with the design plans. And we too recognize the need for making the improvements to Martin Luther King. And so, from administration, we'll continue to seek all available funding opportunities to try and bring that project to fruition. But we are about wrapping up the design process.
Thank you for that, and that does help. And Commissioners Madrid and Casaus, I would pledge to you that, you know, I stand with you in support of seeing that project finished. And I think it's exciting to hear that we're nearing completion of design. I think that having that shovel ready gives us much more leverage and increases our chances of seeing funding for that project. And I want to stand with you on seeing that through.
Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Anything else under Communications? Commissioners, let's move on to the Consent Agenda. As you know, this item is placed on the agenda so that the commission, by unanimous consent, can designate those routine agenda items they wish to be approved or acknowledged by one motion. If any proposal does not meet with the approval of all commission members, or if a citizen so requests, that item will be heard when reached under the regular agenda. Commissioners, 13 items there this evening. The first is the motion to place. The last is the motion to approve or acknowledge. So, I will read 2 through 12, beginning with 2, Request for Approval of Resolution 3057-2021 DFA Budget Changes. 3 is Request for Approval to Apply for and Accept New Mexico Environment Department Recycling and Illegal Dumping Grant Funds for 2021-2022. 4, Request for Approval to Apply for and Accept the Restoration and Resilience COVID Recovery Fund. 5, Request for Approval of Lodger's Tax Quarterly Disbursements for March 2021. 6, Request for Approval to Apply for and Accept, if awarded, the New Mexico Department of Transportation Airport Maintenance Grant. 7, Request for Approval of the Cummins Project 2020 Annual Economic Development Project Summary Report. 8, Request for Approval of the Western Interconnect 2020 Annual Economic Development Summary Report. 9, Request for Approval of the 2020 Annual Economic Development Summary Report from Southwest Cheese. 10, Request for Approval of Fiscal Year 2020 Annual Summary Economic Development Report from Quality Liquid Feeds. 11, Request for Approval to Appoint Constance Williams to Serve as the District 2 Representative on the Senior Services Committee. 12, Request for Approval to Appoint Thomas Martin as the representative from Operator of Industries primarily serving tourists on the Lodger's Tax Advisory Board. Commissioners, unless you have questions or comments, I'd entertain a motion to place the indicated items on the consent agenda by unanimous vote.
I move for approval.
Motion to approve from Commissioner Garza. And did I hear?
No, I just have a slight correction on number 2 of the consent agenda. The Fund 78 is actually Fund 75. The fiscal impact of lowering the cash reserves amount of $88,315, that's actually Fund 75, which is Special Street Fund.
Okay. Thank you, Commissioner Paula.
Excuse me, Mayor. That is for the Lodger's Tax, which is Fund 78. That was the January disbursement for the Lodger's Tax. I just now see that I did not have a subtotal. I didn't have a note on that one. It is Lodger's Tax.
Okay. So, thank you, Ms. Malonson, for that explanation. And Commissioner Paula, I'm playing catch-up. Does that clear up what you were pointing out, or is there still a concern?
No. Well, no. If you flip to page 13, down in Fund 75, you'll see the amount of $88,315 under Street Funds, Fund 75. That's why I was just trying to match it up to the correct fund.
Correct, Commissioner Paula. I inadvertently left out the description for the last one that says professional dues fees and services. That should be Fund 78 Lodger's Tax. I left out the time on that one.
Oh, okay. Okay. Now it makes sense.
Okay. Thanks for catching that.
Okay. All right. That cleared, okay, that's cleared up. Okay. We have a motion to place the indicated items on the consent agenda by unanimous vote from Commissioner Garza. Do we have a second to that motion?
I move.
I think we have the second from Commissioner Casaus. Commissioners, please vote. And it is unanimous. The motion is carried. I would now entertain a motion to approve or acknowledge all items on the consent agenda.
I'll move.
Second.
Motion from Commissioner Madrid, and I heard a second from Commissioner Levitt over there. Commissioners, please vote.
Thank you all to Commissioner.
And it is unanimous. The motion is carried, and our consent agenda has been approved. Commissioners, we have nothing to deal with in the next two sections of the agenda, so we are moving on to New Business. And the first item there this evening is the Request for Approval of Appointment of Representatives for Districts 2 and 3 of the Public Works Committee. And Ms. Burrows is going to advise.
Can you hear me okay?
No, we can't.
We can now. Yes.
Okay, great. Thank you. Russ Bakoff's term for District 2 and Cliff Martin, District 3, expired in February of 2021. The positions have been advertised. Mr. Martin has applied to serve another term for District 3 and is running without any opposition. Russ Bakoff has applied to serve another term for District 2, and Mr. Gene Porter has also applied to serve for this, and therefore, a selection will need to be made by the commission to appoint a representative. And the gentleman had been invited to attend this evening. I'm not sure if Mr. Bakoff is here. I saw, did see Mr. Porter.
Right. Okay, great. Well, I guess we can start by thanking Mr. Cliff Martin for applying and being willing to serve in the District 3 position. And since he's unopposed, we can go ahead and say congratulations to Mr. Martin. Thank you for being willing to serve there. And in that case, we would like to hear from Mr. Bakoff and Mr. Porter. And Mr. Porter, I did see you in the meeting earlier. If you're still there, great. I see him. Do we have Mr. Bakoff in the meeting?
Mr. Bakoff did call me and expressed his interest in running for this position, but was going to watch the meeting but unable to attend virtually.
Okay, great. All right. Thanks for that, Mayor Pro Tem. With that, Mr. Porter, we'd like to give you the floor to talk about your interest in serving on this committee.
Thank you, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, and Commissioners, for allowing some time for me to speak. Can you guys hear me okay?
We can. We can hear you perfectly.
Great. Many of you guys understand that I am a lifelong citizen of Clovis, New Mexico, and love my community. And I'm always looking for ways to serve the city, the community, and the people in various ways. Public Works is, I admitted, admittedly, I know very little about the Public Works. My overview of that would be that it's a team effort from the city and different departments to execute and maintain the quality of life for the community. And that may even spill into structures or other events or other items. I look forward to learning if you guys feel like I am a good fit for that position. I feel like I'm full of energy and bring a great perspective, and will work very hard to improve and be a great contributor to that position.
Well, thank you, Mr. Porter. Appreciate that. Comments or questions for Mr. Porter? Commissioners?
No comments. Gene, I just appreciate you, your interest in serving on Public Works.
Yeah, Gene, I'm happy that you're applying for that position. And I am on the Public Works Committee as a commissioner, and I appreciate you putting your hat in the ring. And good luck. And you've been here all of your life, and you've had a lot to do with things in Clovis with the dragon mane and all that. So, I appreciate you applying. Thank you.
If there are another comments or questions for Mr. Porter, Commissioners, I believe you have a ballot in front of you. Let's vote for this Public Works District 2 Committee position. Thank you. And it'll just take Mr. Hawal to Ms. Burrows a moment or two to total up the votes, and we'll see who has been selected. But I would again like to thank Mr. Cliff Martin for his willingness to serve in the District 3 spot. And thank you to Mr. Bakoff, as well as Mr. Porter, for your interest in this District 2 spot. I've come to really appreciate, Commissioners, I've come to really appreciate the citizens that volunteer their time and serve on our committees and boards. It's vital, and I love seeing the interest.
Yes, thank you, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, and Commissioners. Mr. Porter has been selected to serve. Thank you.
How about that? Well, thank you, Ms. Burrows, and congratulations to my friend Gene. And we're glad that you're willing to serve there and look forward to that service. Thank you.
Thank you, guys, all of you, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, Commissioners. I'm excited and cannot wait to get started.
Great. Appreciate you. All right, Commissioners, we will move on to item 2 in New Business, and that is Request for Approval to Upgrade Library Software, Online Catalog, Patron Records, Bibliographic Item Records, Cataloging, and All Other Features Needed to Facilitate Proper Management of Library Services Using Atrium Book Systems. And I believe we have Ms. Margaret Hinchey joining the meeting virtually this evening. And I believe we have Ms. Margaret Henchy joining the meeting virtually this evening to share with us on this item. Welcome, Ms. Henchy, we're glad to see you, and, uh, the floor is yours.
Yes, thank you, thank you, Mayor, Mayor Pro-Tim and Commissioners. What I'm looking for tonight is approval to upgrade my library software system. And when you think of library software, it's all the guests that runs the library. So it includes patron records, item records, bibliographic records, serials records, cataloging records, um, online catalog, reserves, I mean, there's a whole gamut of things. The company we are currently with, Innovative, we've been with it since two thousand and six, they continue to go up in price every year. The last, the fee for twenty-twenty were fourteen thousand three hundred and forty-four. They are expected to go up at least five percent for twenty-twenty-one. The company that I'd like to, um, like to work on our library software system is Atrium Book Systems. This company offers so much more than Innovative does in terms of patron needs, in terms of collection, in terms of cataloging, in terms of ease of use. Um, so what happens when you change software companies is you have to X, you have to give permission to X, they have to release your data, they have to extract your data. So Innovative, Innovative will extract our data, that data for sixty-five hundred dollars. Our contract ends in, in August, so we would need to notify them by late May so that they have ninety days. Once that data is extracted and given to Atrium Book Systems, it's given them, then, it's given to their development site. And then they build our collection statistics, our patron records, our bibliographic, our item records, our serials records, our cataloging module, our acquisitions module. And that process takes eight to twelve weeks. Personally, I've never been involved in such a major exchange of data from one company to the other, but I have talked to several libraries that have moved from Innovative to Atrium, and I have, like, just perfectly rate, rating reviews. And the first year for Atrium will be about twelve thousand with perhaps some, with some scanners and some receipt printers. After that, the, um, cost goes down to about fifty-two hundred a year. So when, if we are, if we are allowed to do this, when Atrium gets our data and they start building the records, we would never do without an online system, online catalog or patron or, um, bibliographic records. We will go live as soon as our contract with Innovative ends. Atrium also will come to the library and give us one and a half days of online, uh, training to do this. Is this a big step? It's a big step for us because we have been with Innovative since two thousand and six. But I feel by looking at Atrium compared to Innovative, Innovative no longer serves our patron needs. We need something that's got more possess, something that's more enhanced, and something that provides more options. So that's why I'm asking the commission to approve up tonight.
Well, thank you for that explanation, Ms. Henchy. We appreciate, appreciate that very much, and, and thanks for what you do. We have a wonderful library. And, and so it's, uh, we're, it, it's something that we're all proud of, and, and, uh, we are interested in hearing, uh, about your needs. And, and I'll check with the Commissioners if, see if we have any questions. Commissioners?
I don't have a question. I just wanna say thank you for what you do there, Margaret. Good job. There's always, uh, people talking about how a great, uh, library is. I appreciate that. And, um, with that, I make a motion to approve.
Okay, we have a motion for approval from Commissioner Garza.
Second.
Second from Mayor Pro-Tim Bryant. Commissioners, please vote. And the vote is unanimous. The motion is carried. Thanks again, Ms. Henchy, for joining the meeting this evening. And, uh, we, uh, we're, we're glad to, glad to hear from you and, and glad that we can, uh, help you out with that need.
Thank you for letting me go forward our way. Thanks so very much.
You betcha, have a good night. Commissioners, next is Item Three under new business, and it is request for approval of transfer of five acres of attractive land within the southeast quarter of Section Thirty-One, Township Two in R thirty-six E, Range Thirty-six E, from the city of Clovis to Curry County for the construction of a rural fire station. And Ms. Burrows is going to advise, please.
Yes, thank you, Mayor, Mayor Pro-Tim and Commissioners. I actually have, uh, Chief Nolan on the video, I think, this evening.
Yeah, I see him there. Hello, Chief Nolan. Hello, thanks for joining us, Chief Nolan. We'll, we'll give you the floor to share with us on this.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Pro-Tim, Commissioners. So the request tonight is for the transfer of the city property to the county for a rural fire station. The rural fire station, uh, under the county would be the County Land Fire Department. That department is currently in service. They're housing their units at the, uh, fairground currently. But the request and need for that property, that property is approximately two miles north of Cheese Plant. And with that County Land Fire District going in, it actually landlocks the city of Clovis Fire Department. As their service area is south with the addition of Ranch Village area to the north and west, Pleasant Hill to the north and east, and Texaco, uh, outside of the County Land Fire Department to the east. Where that's imperative to the city, it will decrease our, in, in fact, it does away with our current outside protection area under the ISO rating, uh, for which we've lost points for in the past. That's important again to the fire department. We received our Class Two rating from ISO only making that by one point six-nine points with decreases in the pointage due to the outside protection area. So again, this is a wonderful, wonderful benefit to the fire department, and I hope you see the need and, and the approval of the transfer, and would be happy to take any questions.
Well, we appreciate that, Chief Nolan, and, uh, makes, makes sense to me. Commissioners, questions for Chief Nolan? Or, I'm sorry, Ms. Burrows is waving me down. Ms. Burrows?
Uh, after the commission, Mayor, I, I just wanted to let you know that, uh, in conversation with County Manager Powell, he advises if the county isn't successful in obtaining their grant funding for this, they will deed it back to the city.
Okay, okay.
I move for approval.
Second.
Motion to approve from Commissioner Casaus and second from Commissioner Madrid. Commissioners, let's vote. Thank you, Commissioners. The vote is unanimous, and the motion is carried. Chief Nolan, great to hear from you this evening. Appreciate you, sir.
And Mayor, if I could just make a comment now. Uh, as you well know, being in, with your business, that ISO rating is, is very important to all of our citizens because the better that it is, the lower our home insurance. So, uh, th- this is a nice win for the citizens.
Yep. Thanks for pointing that out, Commissioner, appreciate that. And again, uh, Chief Nolan, thanks a lot for joining us, sharing with us this evening. Next, we'll look at Item Four under new business, and it is request for approval of memorandum of agreement between the City of Portalis, City of Clovis, City of Tuukumcari, County of Roosevelt, County of Curry, County of Quay, and County of DeBaca for the purpose of conducting a feasibility, feasibility study for an inpatient psychiatric hospital and mental health facility in Clovis, New Mexico. With the city of Clovis paying forty-nine percent, which is twenty-nine thousand four hundred dollars of the cost. And, um, I'm excited to hear about this one, and, uh, Mr. Hawalt is going to advise. Mr. Hawalt?
Thank you, Mayor, Mayor Pro-Tim and Commissioners. Since Ms. Burrows has played such an integral part in, uh, the United Way, as well as the Youth Success Program, and as well as working on mental health issues, um, throughout the years and trying to get this facility established, I'm gonna let her advise regarding this matter.
Fair enough.
Thank you, Mr. Hawalt. Thank you, Mayor, Mayor Pro-Tim and Commissioners. So, um, for, for several years when I was on the United Way Board, um, uh, Ms. Birch, uh, helped us to look at, um, helping the youth of our community, what we need to do to address youth success, to give them the tools in the toolbox to grow and develop, uh, well, one of the areas, and we brought in a contractor to help us to work on this. And one of the areas that was identified was mental health. And so after, and there were about six different areas. So since then, uh, we have subcommittees under the leadership of David Robinson, um, who's with Plateau, and then Rick Masters, uh, with Cannon Air Force Base. And, uh, so we've been working to implement the plans from, from that youth success strategy. About a year or so ago, we had a meeting of various groups to see how we could move this forward, and it stalled a bit. And then we came up again, um, in the fall of this last year, and, um, with Roosevelt, Portalis, Quay, DeBaca, all the, all the entities that we just mentioned. And everybody, uh, recognizes the need and concern to, uh, to have, uh, to try and address this. So we've, uh, been looking at a, um, a feasibility study and have agreed that we'd like to move forward with that. The various entities are, um, coming to their councils and commissions. I believe Curry County approved it this, on Tuesday, um, and the others have also been, been doing the same. It's, uh, we've, I've talked with the federal, uh, the federal level, like grant funding and so on, and of course, that would be part of the feasibility study as to how you can pay for something like this. Cannon Air Force Base has certainly expressed the need, and I know that, uh, Chief Nolan is on the line as well this evening, nodding his head. There's something that, uh, that is something that the fire department would, would dearly like to, um, to assist them in the work that they do. So we're here before you this evening to ask if we can begin the process as you see in the MO, um, MOU would be, uh, the city of Clovis would be the fiscal agent. And we are looking to potentially, uh, construct a, um, psychiatric mental health, um, inpatient, outpatient here in Clovis. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Burrows. Commissioners, what are your thoughts or questions on this?
Mayor?
Yes, Commissioner Lovett.
Uh, it's interesting, I had some conversation with, um, mental health leaders in our community. It's been probably a month ago now, so this is very timely. Um, I, I certainly know that we have a need, and I'm certainly in support of the feasibility study. I just, again, as we're looking at the, it's not just the dollars to open the facility, it's the dollars to keep it open. And I know we've had some facilities in the region that have closed, and part of that study, we'd like to see, you know, why, why they closed, um, and to make sure we don't have those same pitfalls, um, here. But again, I, I am in support of the study, so thank you.
Thank you for that, Commissioner Lovett. Was that a motion?
Well, I think, I, I don't wanna make a motion until we get all the comments.
Okay.
I just have a comment, Mayor, Commissioners, and everybody listening. I know, speaking as a nurse, that we really do need the psychiatric and the mental health visibility done in this town and the surrounding area. So I too am in full support of it.
Thank you for that, Commissioner.
And that's a second.
So I guess I did make a motion.
Well, let's, let's check with everyone, see if they have other comments or questions, and then we'll come back and make that official because I, I don't think you officially made the motion. Comments or questions?
No, I think we had so many conversations about this need, and I think it's important that we have something done soon. So I'm in support of this, so.
Great, great.
Yeah, Mayor, I, I agree as well. I think, uh, our mental health situation is a definite concern, uh, for our community and many others throughout New Mexico. And I think this is a much-needed facility, so I'm in support as well.
I, I am too, and, and, you know, if you look at all of these, um, these cities and counties that are involved in, in this feasibility study, um, I think it, I think it speaks to the need of the region. And so I'm excited about, you know, not only filling that need, but the likelihood of, uh, it being located here and creating jobs in our community. And, um, I, I think, uh, this is something that, that I'm very supportive of and interested in finding out the outcome of the feasibility study. Commissioner Lovett, would you like to make a motion?
After all the comments I've heard, and also, uh, believing in the partnerships that we have with all of our governmental entities around, and that's the only way this will work, um, and I'm pleased that they're all being involved with this study cost, I'd make my motion to approve.
Thank you. And Commissioner Casaus, would you like to?
I will, second.
All right. Motion to approve from Commissioner Lovett, second from Commissioner Casaus. Commissioners, please vote. And it is unanimous. The motion is carried. Thank you. And Ms. Burrows, thank you for bringing that before us this evening. Next is reports of boards, officers, and committees. One planned report there this evening, the monthly investment report from Ms. Leanne Malonson. Ms. Malonson, the floor is yours. Ms. Malonson, we'll, I think you're muted.
Sorry, sorry.
That's all right.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Pro-Tim and Commissioners. I was trying to be a little multitasking. So, uh, February report for revenues and expenditures. We started the month with forty, a little over forty-six point two million, ended at forty-six point eight million. An overview of our ending cash, general fund, Fund One, two point three million, solid waste, Fund Two, four point three million, environmental tax, Fund Six, seven point four million, wastewater, Fund Ten, nine point five million, economic development, Fund Sixty Four, two point eight million, our water grocery receipts, Fund Sixty Six, one point four million, drainage improvements, Fund Eighty Eight, a little over a million. And a breakdown of our funds, we have twenty-three point five million in our local banks and twenty-three point two million in our state pool. Our interest for the month was just slightly over four thousand. Our eight-month interest were a little over sixty-eight thousand, and our state pool is at point nine six zero zero. And I'm happy to answer any questions. And, um, also, our grocery receipts came in today. We are down just slightly over six percent compared to this time last year. We are thirteen, little about thirteen percent down for the year compared to last year. And budget-wise, we are still about eight percent above budget. So we continue to track that.
Thank you for that, Ms. Malonson. When you state that we were six point six-four percent down, um, compared to this ti- did you phrase that compared to this time last year?
Last year, right, for the, for this, for the month.
For the month.
Compared to this month last year. To compare it to the previous year, we're about a little over one percent up from nineteen.
Okay. Thank you for that, and, and thank you for your report. Commissioners, questions, comments?
Questions, no comments, thank you.
No questions or comments, just thank-yous. Thank you, Ms. Malonson, appreciate that. Commissioners, I'd like to report briefly, uh, as to my service on the Senior Services Committee. We met, uh, a week ago today and, uh, talked about several things, including, uh, the, the carpet and tile and other finishings, uh, that are selected for the new Senior Services Center that will be constructed in the next couple of years. We'll be working on that. Those, those samples are in the lobby at City Hall. If you haven't been down to City Hall, you can go in there and see that and, and see some of the things that have been selected for, uh, the finishings in the new senior center. Something else that I thought was really, really interesting, and I, we had heard this a time or two along the way over the last year, um, but, as you know, the senior services, uh, programs aren't able to function right now due to the COVID, uh, situation and restrictions. But, but gosh, they're doing a good job in spite of it. They're doing, uh, you know, Google meets and, and social media, uh, meets to do aerobics and exercise classes and things like that. And so I just applaud Barbara Riggan and, uh, everyone in, in senior services for their efforts. The Charisma Meal Program, they're delivering two-hundred-and-twenty-seven meals per day on average to folks' homes. To, you know, so if you just think about that, that effort and how, how important that work is that they do, it, it, it was impressing. it was impressing to me at least. Also, there's an effort, and La Casa is instrumental in helping with this, but there's an effort to do a senior sign-up drive to assist seniors that may not have internet access with getting registered for the COVID-nineteen vaccine. So I wanted to share that with you. I also wanted to mention that the mayor's council schedule is such that we didn't meet this week, we'll meet on Monday. I've asked for a few agenda items for that meeting, including to talk with hopefully Dr. Schgrace and the governor's staff about the gating criteria. And something that, I could be wrong, but something that kind of concerns me is that positivity rate that, that, that we have to meet. It has to be five percent or lower. It would seem to me that as people are getting vaccinated, there will be less people going and getting tested. And therefore, it might be kind of hard to maintain that, that positivity rate. That's how we got yellow. That's how we've stayed yellow. If you're tracking the cases, we have a real good shot at going green next week. I would hate for the positivity rate to creep up and give us trouble. So I'm just trying to manage the, the, you know, state's strategy and, and, you know, understand the rules and play by them. But I, I want to ask for them to add an element, you know, to, to take into account the percentage of the folks that have received the vaccine in our county, you know, and maybe stop counting that positivity rate against us. I also want to talk with the state's leadership about challenges with the vaccines and the phases. I'm hearing from providers right now that they have vaccine doses that they can't give to people because we, we haven't moved on to the next phase yet. And so I, I just want to kind of present those real problems that, that our providers are having and sharing with me. And anyway, wanted to share those things. Oh, lastly, when we last met, you appointed me as the city's representative, if the city is, was allowed to have a representative on the working committee that the county was putting together to explore and/or set up a land trust. I, I did attend the county's commission meeting on Tuesday, thinking that I would need to make my case as to why I, I needed to be there. When, when I arrived, I was pleased to, to find out that the commission had talked and, and they, they didn't see a reason for, for me to apply. They, they, they decided that it was in fact automatic that the city should have a representative on that working committee. So that working committee so far is made up of, of two county commissioners, myself and a gentleman by the name of Spencer Pipkin. And he's representing Curry Soil and Water Conservation. And there will be a fifth voting member added to that, that committee, but the, the county commission hasn't determined that yet. But there is plans for a first meeting and so forth. And I'll report to you as those meetings happen. Any other reports from any of you as to your board service or committee service?
Mayor, I'll just mention that Water Conservation Month is coming up for the month of April. And I think we need to remind our citizens of the importance of conserving water, not just during the month of April, but in everyday life. This is something that we're going to have to continue to do from now on. So I just want to send out that reminder.
Thank you for that, Mayor Pro Tem. That's, that's a good reminder. Appreciate that. Any other reports? Yes, Commissioner Casaus?
I have one thing. I, I just want to thank Lisa for the, I guess they're called wind art down on Main Street. It looks really, really nice. I hope they just don't blow to Texas with our winds. But it really looks nice, and I hope the community enjoys them.
Thanks for bringing that up. I will have to drive by and look at that. Anything else under reports? Okay, let's move on and talk about future agenda items. Mr. Hawalt, Ms. Burrows, future agenda items?
Yes, thank you, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem and Commissioners. We have the agreement with MuniCode for the city code revisions that we're working on. So we'll bring that presentation to you next time. There's a request to use capital improvement fund, planned funds for the airport. I have building abatement of dangerous buildings, National Service Recognition Day, water conservation, as you said, Mayor Pro Tem, and Civil Aviation Board vacancy. And then Civic Center Management. Thank you.
Okay, great. Thank you for that. Look forward to, to hearing about all of that. Commissioners, do you have future agenda items? Okay, hearing none. We will move on to announcement of date, time, and place of city board and commission meetings. Commissioners, you want to make note in particular of that first one, Strategic Planning Session, one thirty PM to five thirty PM this coming Monday, March twenty-second. And that'll be held right here in this room. Look forward to the strategic planning process. I, I, I hope that, that we all can come away with a, a shared vision and all know which direction we're going as a, as a commission and as a community. Public Works Committee will meet at eight thirty AM Wednesday, March twenty-fourth, here in the North Annex.
It's canceled.
Oh, that has been canceled.
Yes.
We won't have the Public Works Committee meeting next week. Parks and Recreation and Beautification, five thirty PM, Monday, March twenty-ninth, here in the North Annex.
Yeah, that's still on.
All right. Sounds good. And then the next city commission meeting will be at five fifteen on Thursday, April first, April Fool's Day.
Cancel that one.
Here in the North Annex.
I'm not going to be here, Mr. Mayor.
Oh, come on. Looking forward to, to the, the strategic planning meeting next week and all the other things that we have going on. Commissioners, appreciate you very much.